For a second, and you're just the second header, okay. Motion on favor, I.
All right.
Okay, motion passed. So with that, we'll look to public comment. And I just wanted to remind everyone that according to the board policy number one five one zero, if the purpose of speaking comes forward, they send the attorney person. Person's desiring to speak, she'll be required to give their name and the address. Only limited to three minutes for the presentation. Time left for each speaker will be adjusted by the chair and the speaker privilege will also be terminated by the chair bound to be out of order. So if anyone can.
My name is Angelo Waring. I live at twelve forty seven, seventh avenue, four thirty. We are. I am a proud wife of David Waring and against his wishes, I am going to see you tonight. I'm not going to say what I initially intended to. Instead, I'm going to do what my husband wants me to do and what he himself has already done. I'm waiting for my husband and I'm going to forgive. I forgive. I forgive the school board for not realizing that my husband did nothing wrong and for listening.
Sorry, Ms. Waring, you can't talk about personal matters, so.
So it's personnel, what do you mean? I don't understand.
So you're bringing up personal related matter that we can't discuss in a public forum, so.
I still don't understand. How me talking about my husband is a personnel matter.
Because you're speaking about his employment.
No, not nothing I hear says anything about his employment. So I don't. You know, actually, it says that he's no longer employed here, so. I don't believe it says.
Right, but I guess the purpose of the public comment is to talk about matters that we can speak about in a public forum and that's not something that we can speak about in a public forum.
Okay, but usually you don't have a back and forth because the first time I talked about my public session in November or December was, you didn't reply to any of that, so I don't understand why you would want to reply, why you would be replying to this one as just public comment. Unless you've been informed for me not to speak, I don't know.
No, I'm just simply explaining to you what the purpose of the forum is.
Right, and to express my thoughts.
So as long as they're not to discuss the employment of Mr. Waring, then you can continue. But if it's to discuss that, we'll have to ask you respectfully to not continue.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with his employment because he's no longer employed here. So I'm just going to say that I forgive certain people for certain things, which I thought was okay. So I forgive the school board for not realizing that he did nothing wrong and for listening only to a lawyer and words of what might or could happen in the future. So I don't understand how that could be. Shall I continue?
I bet you've done some more than you're saying, I guess.
Just listing those people I forgive.
Well, I think that's a student based on what you said, so.
Well, I forgive those who. We're gonna go back and forth, so out of respect for you, I'll just publish this.
Thank you. And Mrs. Corbin, did we receive any other public comments?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. So, Assemblymember McDonald, thank you for being here this evening and we'll look to you to provide us with some information on the state budget.
Well, thank you, President Sotomayor. To the board members and to Superintendent Stevens. The Waterfleet community, as is normal with the budget process, we try to touch base, kind of giving an update of what's going on. As you know, probably about a month ago now, the governor introduced her budget. And I will tell you, for our education perspective, most school districts did very, very poorly. Waterfleet, we're doing okay. We're not, you know, there's always can be a little problem with it. But the reality is compared to others, for some strange reason, much better shape. And when you look at the total increase in what I call foundation aid or operating aid, it's just under three million dollars, which is good. Play it's much worse than almost every other district member present. I have eight or nine other districts. If we kept the pace that we've been the last couple of years and remember last year, I said, I don't think it's gonna be any better than this. Well, for most people, that's the truth. If we kept the pace, where we come up short is about sixty one thousand dollars. So if we were to continue on making everyone fund properly at the school age, the school fund, there'd be another sixty one thousand dollars coming in, you know what? It may happen, we'll see what happens. We are finishing up, tonight was our last night of budget conference where the majority members talk and share their concerns about a lot of different items. Speaker said tonight very clearly, education is always an priority in the assembly and we're gonna continue to push that. So whatever your concerns are, it'll be in shortfalls, we're gonna try to adjust that in our one house budget resolution, which will not come out until probably the first week of March. So. Once that's out, then the Senate, the Assembly and the governor start the negotiations and probably the first or second week of April, we will have a firm budget. It's highly unlikely we'll have it done before April. April first is on this day after Easter, so we will not be there. We'll be there until Thursday, maybe Good Friday, but we will not be there Easter Sunday trying to get a budget done. It'll probably be done that week after or the week after that. So overall, this is one of the few districts I can say you're in better shape than everybody else. Liz, why are you saying? Where they're really getting hurt is in the rural areas and suburban areas. Cities overall, Troy's doing okay, Mahos is doing okay, Niceley's okay, Waterfleet's doing better. So in a way, it kind of levels things up. I mean, I've been here for 12 years now and there's been years when it's been pretty tough. You've had to make a lot of difficult decisions, you're still gonna have difficult decisions to make, there's never an easy decision when it comes to education fund because everybody wants the best for all the community. It's just not impossible to do, but we're in a much better position. Otherwise, the only other hot issues in education that we continue to work on. One, I mean, it's not a quick work here as much as it is at Bosse's. There's a cap on Bosse's instructor salaries that is important to have a raise, hasn't been raised in probably fifteen, twenty years. It's capped at thirty thousand dollars. It costs money, so that's a challenge. Keith will understand the next thing I talk about, which is the fact that they're gonna put a freeze on prior year's losses. That's not good because that's a slow way of crawling back some money from the districts. Sometime with the complexity of how different services are provided here, there's gonna be times when the education department actually overpays and they're quick to take the money back. And when they underpay, they're very soon to restore. So we will have discussions about that. That's kind of inside baseball type stuff, but at the end of the day, it impacts how much money you have to keep patients on support. And the only other thing is school buses. As you know, a couple of years ago, we passed the electric school bus, well, they call it a mandate, but it's a mandate that's moving. That's challenging. School buses, for the most part, you have a fifteen year life, the electric school buses have a ten year life. We allow them to bond it for fifteen years, there's a five year gap. You know, everyone agrees we need to move and find more environmentally friendly ways of transporting children. That's an important thing. But we're kind of, like anything else, we're kind of pushing out a little bit quick. So we're very mindful that we recognize that the buses are usually about two and a half tons what they normally are in regards to cost, that's gonna have an impact on our transportation aid, which is gonna have an impact on the overall aid. So I've been trying to stress to our colleagues that we, you know, we don't need to run first. We can just do a brisk walk and try to move in the right direction, do the right thing. Also give time and technology, give technology some time to catch up because we know five years from now, things are gonna be a bunch more intense. There'll be newer ideas. Right now, hydrogen buses are being experimented in the state of New York because electric buses in the Northeast freeze and their batteries are cut down. So I've been trying to work on getting hydrogen buses as a pilot to Steve. That's something that will be helpful. So it's, you know, if they can use it to run throughout that whole Amazon warehouse, around twenty four hours a day, we could probably figure out the school buses to run these.
Is there also concern with the less of being electric? I know there's like a lot of firefighters and things have concerns about, you know, the batteries.
Yeah, there's, you know, like anything else, it's a developing field. We're gonna know more tomorrow than we do today. So I think, you know, there's, there's, last year, we, in the budget, we kind of go into this, let's do a study and see how things are going. So that progress report will come out sometime and that'll help push it down the peg a little bit more. But for some big districts, it gets to be challenging. When you're looking at having the electrical infrastructure and the garage space to store these, it's real money. And, you know, the question's gonna be is where it's gonna come from. It's definitely, it's a state mandate, so it should be coming from the state, but we have to figure that out. So that's all I have for you. This is actually one of the better meetings, the other ones usually there's, it's a little more, a lot more grievance, I'll leave it at that. I don't know if you have any questions before I take off, I'm happy to answer it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Michelle, thank you. Bye now.
And then with that, we'll have the other video communication team, Heidi Lee. This is you.
Yes, sorry.
This is really a, thanks to Judy and our digital content specialist, Chrissy Tompkins from Bosse's, who put together a little bit of a snapshot of what it looks like and what's going on with the use of Yonder. You know, I will preface this with, we know that not every single student is using their couch, but what is happening is that we are, we are seeing a lot less distraction of having their cell phones in school. And just a little bit of a snapshot, having seen it, this is on our website now and thanks to the communication teams for putting this together.
When they first introduced the Yonder pouches, when I first heard about it, I was really happy, I was really supportive. Last year, they were all on their phones, there was no participation, it seemed like there were no friendships building and it was just very dead and not a good vibe.
It was a growing concern over the past few years and while we want to teach students the appropriate use of technology, we also want to make sure that students are engaged in learning. And that distraction, that addiction to a cellphone just became so strong that we at the district looked to see what we could do to help alleviate it.
If we work on projects in a class with people that I might have not known before, I feel a lot more confident going in to work with someone that I didn't know because at least I know that they're gonna be present instead of a whole bunch of them.
The Yonder pouches have been a successful addition to our school environment. Our students are more engaged in the classroom, they're more engaged with each other.
It's living without something that I don't need, but I'd like to have.
The kids are really responsive, they're engaged, they're communicating, you see their faces, they're smiling, they're interacting with each other. So it's been a really fun experience.
It's not flawless and its implementation wasn't exactly what I expected in a bad way, but I think of all the things they could have done, this is probably the best way to do it.
Helping us learn better skills of communication and how to act appropriately in the workplace and in life in general.
Not only is it about being present and engaging, but it's about what's caught down the road, report card grades and graduation rate, eliminating this distraction and creating more opportunities to foster learning for every student, every day.
So again, just a little snapshot of what's going on. You saw a little bit of our canyon near corner, the small gym that has been kind of revamped. There's kids talking in the hallway, they're engaging at lunch. It's a great kind of environment to support, so just something to thank them for and share with all of you.
With that, we will have Ms. McKee come up and provide an update on the Family Opportunity Center grant.
Um, my name is Danielle McKee. I run the Family Opportunity Center here at the junior, senior high school, also at the elementary school and I'm also at Evolve at the Civic Center. I was hired last April, so we're coming up on a full year of this program being active in our community and I just wanted to share a little bit with you about what I've been up to, the support of Kelly in our community and give you some data, but also some experiences from families themselves. So my background is as a school counselor, I've been a school counselor for seven years. I'm also a mom of two kids, I have a two and a half year old and an almost five year old. I feel like that brings a lot to family work, having that experience myself. I can say my kids weren't sleeping at this age or my kids, you know, get a little kooky sometimes and can relate. So that there's value in that, I think, of being like parents together. I did therapy in Maine, I lived in Maine for three years and did one-on-one therapy during COVID and a lot of that work was home-based. And that's where the love for families really grew in me, that I could see that when we sit together on someone's couch, the work gets real meaningful there. So I'm real passionate about family work and collaborating between the school and the home because you guys can give all these messages to our kids and it can last a little bit, but if it's not being reiterated at home and echoed by my parents and family members, then it can only go so far. So we really need to work together. The grant came about before I was here, so. But we saw, the district saw a need for connecting home and school, that there was a fragmented experience between home and school. So they really wanted to bolster that connection and get parents into the school more, especially at the higher levels. So the response is creating a caring and informed liaison between home and school, that's me, hopefully more people in the future. But the goal is to serve seventy five families a year for three years. So how I'm doing this is I get referrals from our student support teams. I meet with the high school and junior high and elementary school support teams and in constant communication with those teams so that they're feeding me families that they think, you know, need a little extra support. So the support I provide is voluntary, families aren't being mandated to this. So different than, you know, some other types of responses that, you know, they have to willingly want to engage in this. So I'm often calling families, explaining to them what I do, showing up at a school event, handing out these brochures that you see and letting them know I'm here if you need me. I provide caregiver coaching, so some parenting support, I'll explain in the next slide after this, but also communication between parents and their children because that gets harder as we get older, I think. We also meet concrete needs, so like providing for bills for families, you know, who are struggling in the wintertime with their national grid or, you know, had a car repair come up and they are struggling with making their rent. You know, we can help supplement those things in a month where, just to help get them over that hump and make things a little more, less stressful so that ultimately their children can thrive when they come to school because home stress is less. I make a lot of referrals to community resources, advocate for these students and their families at school meetings, but also go out to the community, go to their doctor's appointments with them, go to, you know, transitional meetings with them and help provide extra information that maybe the family doesn't feel comfortable or can't, you know, provide. And then bringing that information from home to school so that school knows a little bit more of the context and what's going on at home and can see a bigger picture. I have a curriculum that I work with that, you know, I'm attending monthly supervisions with my trainer to learn about everyday parenting and the family checkup model. So the initial process in getting involved with me for most families is to do what's called a family checkup. It's like going to the doctor, what's going on? You share with me whatever you feel comfortable sharing. We do a little, actually, a videotape between, videotape like a conversation between a parent and child. And it's supposed to simulate a normal conversation and how it would go if I'm out of the room. How do you and your child interact with one another? And I thought, and Kelly thought, I think, too, that that would be a little awkward for families, would they really want to be videotaped? But I say, this is not something I'm sharing with anyone, I don't share them with Kelly. It's for me, you and your child to look back at on our third session and say, how do you think this went? How do you think you're communicating from an outside point of view? What do you see? And I've had parents, I don't even have to give any feedback, they're seeing it for themselves. I cut my child off, I didn't let them elaborate. I gave them the answer instead of letting them say it for themselves. So, you know, it's really provides so much opportunity for growth and then parents are making their own goals. Part of this voluntary process is letting the parents lead. You tell me what you want to work on, I'm not gonna tell you, but I'm gonna support you when you do, you know, decide on something. So parenting education is needs-based and they lead. So in ten months, we've served forty families, seventy one children, done two events, Thanksgiving feast at Evolve for the families over there that are involved in the FOC and then a gingerbread making party here at the high school where we provided clothes and gift cards around the holidays. I've made sixty five referrals at least that I can count and have tracked, but there's probably more, you know, connections to counselors and things like that, food pantries, provided seven a full, like everyday parenting coaching session or seven families are fully engaged in the parent coaching. But that's something that's flexible, that if it comes up, then I offer that even in an ongoing relationship, so. And then we've met at least twenty thousand dollars of concrete needs for families in our community. This is just a little bit of, just an excerpt, like a little case scenario of a student that I'm working with right now and just looking, reflecting myself on how it's made a difference for him in his life. He's a fifteen year old student that's on home instruction and because of situations in the school, he's removed. So I go to his home and meet with him. I provide advocacy for him when he has meetings here at school, but also when he's had to go to outside placement, meetings with other school placements. I've gone and attended those meetings and helped give additional information. I help coach his parent in trying to explain what he's going through from a mental health perspective and have helped connect him to in-home therapy. I've connected him, reconnected him with his primary care provider who he hadn't seen in a while to help him get back on medication. That's something that's upcoming that might be able to engage with, that would support him as well. And I'm providing a connection to harm reduction, substance abuse counseling in his home through a video Zoom that I sit with him and attend together. And we participate in that because he's resistant to actually going to a group. So there's a lot of support for this particular family, but I think it's a good one and we've seen some good work. These are two parents who have graciously allowed me to videotape them and give their own feedback. So we'll hear from Genesis first.
So the Family Opportunity Center supported me with my child Jonah Craft, who is turning eight and he's autism, he has trouble with a lot of things and they helped me with giving me advice on how to help him get to his goals if needed. They helped me with rent that was needed and I'm so grateful and appreciative for that. They also helped me in a way where we're in a positive place in my family where I can connect more to my child and I can help him meet his goals at home as well as in school. And they have helped me with food, they have helped me with a bus cab, they have helped me make things possible for me to provide for my child. I've been better connected to the school because of you. Because at first I had trouble with communication with school. Because of you, I was able to connect with Mom McGrath and get a meeting going for Jonah's behavior and that was a positive impact on me and Jonah and the whole school now that we are committed. And Jonah has been doing well in school. He's been coming home a happy face, he's more positive, more relaxed, not cranky, not crying. He's more interactive with us. He's more willing to do family homework together, more family days. And he's just turning into a different kid, a more positive kid. And because of you, I was able to connect to that school and fix the problem that my son was going through.
And this is Billy.
They have suffered and need and understanding now.
Why'd you do that, Joe?
I don't know. I don't know if it will, that's it's important.
My child, they're able to develop how their mental works, how to be able to have them cooperate with me correctly without getting upset as easily and also to kind of understand where our child comes from and not only where I come from, but also where my child comes from.
And how have you been better connected to the school because of the Family Opportunity Center?
Well, I get a lot more insight on what goes on at the school as well as what goes on with each individual child.
So moving forward, the hope and the goal is to try and serve more families. Forty is not meeting the goal, it's a lot, but we have a lot more work to do. And I'm here for it. So continuing to work with community partners and just more, knowing more agencies in the community, communicating with them, having these warm handoff relationships where, you know, I have some of those already, but I know there's more out there that I just want to grasp. So that's a goal for me this year, but also using these parents, you know, who want to share their experiences and their wisdom with others, like Billy, she's already agreed, she speaks Spanish. She's already agreed to support me in the elementary school and help with some small group parenting exercises. So, you know, having her, just another person and another great parent to be able to spread the word and this information and be together in community, I think will be good for Waterfleet as a whole, so. Any questions?
Danielle doesn't give herself enough credit, she's serving forty students, forty families by herself.
And we've also, Joe, we've also chosen families that have, a lot of students that have used the help that she provides and we've tried to get quota quota, we're all paying for our buck, but above all, you can't do what she does without the biggest heart and Danielle, you're a really welcome addition to our team, so. Thank you.
It's a family for sure, I appreciate you all.
If you recall, this was the grant that we received from Office of Children and Family Services about this time last year. So we're rounding up on a year mark of having the grant and as Danielle shared, she's hit the ground running in her first year and we've supported a lot of families, so. She laughs at forty, but I'm impressed.
And how long is the grant, this one?
Three years, so. Third of the line.
And I hope to stay around after that.
Thank you for sharing.
Did you say sharing or caring?
Oh.
Oh.
Sharing or caring?
So with that, we will look to Dr. Stevenson on the spectrum to provide us with the ESA accountability status.
Do I have to get up again? I might jump us off. Okay, so we have been notified by the State Education Department regarding our accountability status for the school year. So ESA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, it's federal law that school districts in every state need to abide by this. The state of New York has a plan that they've created and are holding schools accountable. and are holding schools accountable, schools and districts. So the law requires that states hold public schools accountable for student achievement. And there are certain things in our state plan for New York State that each school and district are held accountable for. One being student academic achievement, those three through eight assessments that students take, as well as regions, student growth and school progress. And that looks at year to year, the growth that schools and students make from one, one year to the next. The progress of English language learners, these are E and L students. And the growth that they make, it doesn't mean that they are not, that they master English, but it's just growth between the five domains of entering, emerging, transitioning, expanding, and commanding. So it's just growth in that metric set by their grade level, based on each year of their growth. Chronic absenteeism is another indicator, and then high schools only. It includes graduation rate and college and career readiness. For each school district and school, you are then looked at for each subgroup that you have. So you're looked at all students in general for the school and the district. Then you're looked at English language learners as a subgroup, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, American Indian, Alaskan native, Asian, Native Hawaiian, or other Pacific Islander, Black or African American, Hispanic or Latino, multiracial, and then white. Each one of these is a subgroup. In order to be counted in that subgroup, you need 30 data points. So let me explain for 30 data points. That means one math test is one point, one ELA test is another point. If you're in fifth or eighth grade, your science test becomes a third point. So one child, can it be three data points? But they also could be a student that's an English language learner with a disability, who's economically disadvantaged, and Hispanic. So they're in four different subgroups, as well as the all students category. So just as you think about our student population and the multiple subgroups that we have that are represented, and how those data points kind of accumulate. In years past, pre-COVID, accountability measures were over two years. So all you needed was 30 data points over two school years. So that one student could have had those three tests and then had another ELA and math test added into that, and now they have five, five points, or five data points. This school year, this school year only, is looking at one year of data since the accountability restart, and that was last school year's data that was submitted. With the exception of graduation rate, which is a lag year, but I'll explain that later. Using all that criteria, so all those, all those indicators that I have identified before, and each of those subgroups that I identified, now the state looks at the lowest performing 5% for, for schools. Typically, they go by scenario, and they start with scenario one, and they identify those, and then they go to scenario two, and they identify those. This year, in this restart, they're only looking at indicator one, or, or scenario one. So just this year, both levels, they call this weighted and core achievement. The difference being that one looks at the number of students that were proficient compared to the all students that you have in your school. The second looks at the number of students that were proficient based on just the students that took the assessments. So there's some opt-outs that get categorized into one, that don't get categorized into the other. But if you think about that, you saw all of those different indicators that I had. Academic achievement are, are actually two separate indicators, one's weighted and one's core. So it counts double the weight, if you will, for academic achievement. I mean, feel free to jump in.
You are doing a phenomenal job.
Our district and our schools in particular, this is a shortened version of where we are, but there's much more to this spreadsheet that actually expands, you know, the length of one side of our room that has all of the metrics. But long and short, LSI means?
Local support.
Local support improvement. So years ago, it used to be good standing, they've taken that away, and they, they deemed every school can use local support. So local support improvement is the, is the new good standing. And then we have these that are reddish. It's the color you chose? Blue couldn't be some greater?
I mean, I actually think it's garnet, but.
Okay, I'll give you that. All right. So this LSI is potential target district. So potentially next year, if scores don't improve in these scenarios that they looked at, we would be a potential target district. But this year, we're just in a local support improvement. So we're okay, but there's potential of us crossing that threshold next year. Same with just the junior, senior high school. Potential targeted school of improvement for students with disabilities for the high school, junior, senior high school. That's important. This is six through 12 data that we're looking at.
Five percent versus 10%? So right now, a targeted district would fall in that 5% that I showed a couple slides back. That potential is ranging more in the 10%. So bottom 10% of schools in New York State. What happens unfortunately is you hold this title for multiple years. The 5% will be washed away because anybody in the targeted or the 5%, they're it for a couple of years. So those 10% will now be the new bottom 5%. So we have some work to do in order not to get to that bottom 5% for next year.
Good one. So we're not at the bottom 5%, we're probably at the bottom 10%. But if all those 5% are still identified next year, we'll be the new 5%, that's what the potential. But district, this is all students in the district, in, in district, out of district placements, all data combined. This is a targeted district for the subgroup in Hispanics. Blacks and Hispanics, is that right?
So it's a Hispanic school, we're targeted as a school at the junior, senior high level, but as a district for blacks, we're targeted as the district, so all students combined.
Which is the indicator down here for Hispanics at the school, at the school level. When Kelly and I and some of the steering committee and the other administrators have dissected this data, the school-level data comes primarily from middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So it's junior high, scores on the sixth, seventh, and eighth ELA math assessments. So what do we do with this? Two things. One is that target district, as a district overall, that subgroup for how students in the black subgroup performed, we're looking at the DCEP, a District Comprehensive Improvement Plan. And there's some, some sections of this plan. We are lucky in our district, kind of steering committee, made up of shared stakeholders from both buildings, district and building-level administrators, members of the union, we have some parents, we have some TAs, we have some teachers, lots of different supports that, that make up this committee. And they will be working on drafting our DCEP plan. You remember a few years ago, we had the DCEP, this is approved by the board. Once it's done, probably in July or August. And there's some criteria that we have to identify, including priorities of what the district is going to look at on how we can attend to that particular subgroup. However, when we think about those potential areas that we were also identified for, our priorities will be encompassing of all students because we want all students to progress. So while we may identify some specific strategies for this particular subgroup we were identified for, they will be all encompassing so that we don't fall into the bottom 5% in any other subgroups. And then at the school level, this is a school comprehensive education plan. And this is a little more specific, this committee is a little more specific. It's a, a plan that is put in to support the subgroups that were identified, specifically those students, and attend to the needs that they have. You have to do a comprehensive needs assessment. That is kind of the start of this work. And then based on the results of that needs assessment, you identify some tenants and put together your planning document of the upcoming school year, what, what strategies and supports you're going to put in place to, to support that group of students.
This going next, students at the middle school level.
I think that was it. Again, lots of information, wanted to make it as clear as possible, make sure that you are aware of the areas that the district and the school have been identified for. So this, you know, public information for all of us. But to give you a little bit more of a piece of the puzzle of what's next now, and that's where we now move into the DCEP with our steering committee. We actually had a meeting in January and shared some of this information and started looking at data and discussing next steps. They'll be meeting again throughout the spring. And then the school-level plan, which Ms. Richards is going to get up and running in the next month. And they have a set number of meetings that they have to have before the end of the school year so that they can have their school-level plan prepared by the end to start the calendar. Questions?
So, I mean, obviously, the report is review of my, um, the DCI too, or any ones that it's issued, I mean, it's.
It is.
It is, it goes.
The DCEP also, I don't know, have approval from the state.
Do they say yes or no, or?
Yep, and they'll, you know, they'll analyze what our priorities are. And the DCEP committee has to meet every six weeks and get together and send back new information just to show that we're, you know, doing as we say. The ESA does not need to be handed into the state, but it does need to be approved by the DCEP committee and the superintendent, and you'll certainly have eyes on that as well.
And then what happens is, like, they don't approve it, or we're not, like, meeting our expectations?
I don't think it's an approval process per se, I think it's just, you know, guidance.
What supports do they want, what supports do they have to support, to support this work? I will say, BOCs throughout the state are really the front-runners on providing that support to districts. Kelly and I have attended multiple sessions with our local BOC's Director of Educational Data, I think is her title, that we've been working with already, desegregating some of our data, analyzing where we were drafting some of the documents to set the teams off, off and running. And they'll continue to work with that throughout this, throughout this process. Like we said, you've had a DCEP pre-COVID, so we're, we're aware of that. This is the first time we've had, we've had the ESA. Took all that fun stuff from, you know, Family Outreach.
So with that, we will ask you to provide support and support.
Absolutely. First off, just a thank you to John McDonald. As, as he mentioned, the assembly is hard at work, looking to see where we can go next with the state budget. And we are in a good spot where we hope, we hope that we can see some support for some of our, our neighboring districts as well. In your, on your table, in your packet, you will find a couple pieces of paper. The first one is one that has Waterfleet City Schools on the top. This is from our comptroller. You may remember, if you were on board last year, that each year, the comptroller reviews designations for stress level. This is financial as well as susceptible environmental stress. And both of those reports are here for, for your review. The financial stress designation is that we have no designation. I want to say this is like fifth or sixth year now that we've had no designation, so we're, we're pleased with that. The second sheet of paper is environmental stress. We are susceptible to environmental stress. And those indicators are, are itemized there. One being our percentage of economically disadvantaged students is at 70%. Our student teacher ratio is, is okay at 12.65. Turnover rate is pretty low at 10%. But the other one is percent of English language learners. So a couple, a couple ideas there of economically disadvantaged and English language learners that we don't have a lot of control over that. Those are, those are factors of the community that we are here to support and do what we can, and more reasons, if you will, on why we have programs like the Family Opportunity Center to support, to support the families that, that we care for. So that is there, so that, that can be shared with all of you. Also, at your table is a snapshot of BOC services from our Capital Region BOCs as we kick off the budget cycle in, in the, the next couple of months. This is just a little bit of a picture of the services that are provided by our Capital Region BOCs. Some of those shared services that we participate with, a number of students that we have that are attending CTE and special education programs on their campuses. And then on the back of that has a list of all of our purchased services that we use through BOCs. So for your review, just so that you can kind of see some of the work, the collaboration that goes into the, the Cap Region BOCs and, and the support from two each of its component districts. I would like to congratulate Mrs. Tomlin. She couldn't attend tonight due to another family obligation, but, but on your agenda, you do see her up for tenure, so congratulations to her. And also, keep book your calendar, we have International Night, which is going to be a fun-filled affair. If you know any dancing groups, Mrs. Dementos is looking for those. That is on March 7, from 5:00 to 7:00, right here in the cafeteria and main lobby. And also, March 8, 9, and 10, we have the production of Mean Girls Junior. You might hear some of the kids out in the hallway as practice is, it might be over by now, but they're working hard, so put that on your calendar to come and support some of those students. And just for a reminder for all of you, we will have our first budget workshop on March 6. It'll be at the PTA meeting, that's at 6:30. The second budget workshop will be at our March Board meeting on March 12. And then the third budget workshop will be here in this room at 6 o'clock on March 26. That is a Tuesday. So book those three, three dates so that you can come and support the work of, of building a balanced budget. And that will lead to our presentation of the budget at the April meeting for, for your approval. Other than that, just a happy February break, that is next week. And we will see everybody back the week after for the one month of, of March of us.
Mary Beth, I know you were able to.
No, we just went over upcoming policies, made necessary adjustments, and we'll be sitting on the agenda going forward. And nothing else?
And there's nothing on it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, we'll have the second reading of the revised policies for use of service animals. First reading from the new policy for workplace violence prevention statement. First reading of revised policies for entitlement to attend age and residency, transition services, identification and register of children with disabilities, child blind, children with disabilities, and timeout and physical restraint. And with that, we'll go to the Board of Education discussion. Does that mean, I mean, I don't have anything on it to talk about? I wasn't able to go to the lobby, was anybody able to go? I know it looked like, were you in there? Yeah, it looked like it was really well done.
Yeah, it was a good event. Pretty well attended.
So thank you to those who made that possible. It looked like it was well attended. So with that, I will ask for consent agenda on items 1 through 7, 9 through 25, 27 and 28. Okay, Mary Beth? You'll second, I'm pretty sure. Anything on the motion? On favor? Aye, all of those, sharing how many motions passed. I just. Result of the board approved the appointment of Erin Tracy to the position of hall monitor at the Waterfleet Junior Senior High School for a one-year probationary period beginning February 6, 2024, at a Step 5 teacher aid salary per contract as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll make a motion.
I know. I need to recuse myself of that.
Okay, and then Heather will make a motion.
I'll second.
You'll second, Brian, okay?
All in favor?
Aye.
All of those turning on the motion as passed. Item twenty-six. Result of the board approved the following student teacher observer intern request at the Waterbury Elementary School outlined below as recommended by the superintendent. Brian, you're going to refuse yourself to handle this one?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion? You'll make a motion? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All of those turning on the motion as passed. Bring this back to board discussion. So nothing to change. Really, I was going to just stick with, congrats to all of our sports teams and the coaching staff, our athletic coordinator, and all the support of the team all season. It seems like they had a lot of success and it would be great to see a lot of support. It seems like it's admirable and everything, so that's nice to see. And I'll echo Dr. Stevens from the board that we hope all the students and staff have a wonderful February break. And for those of you who don't know, the PTA and the fire metal club are looking for empty gallon size milk jugs with tops. So if anybody has any before they put them out for recycling, please drop them off. And I know they're collecting them, they may want to be at the elementary school, but if people have them for the high schools, then they drop them off here.
We'll send them back.
Clear.
It would cap.
Yes, that's right. I did say caps. I didn't say clear though. All right, clear.
We have a good hook at Stewart's.
All right. All right. And then the next board meeting, as Dr. Stevens mentioned, is March twelfth. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight at seven thirteen PM. Okay, Mary Beth? I'll second. You'll second? Okay, Heather. Anything on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those turning on the motion as passed. And thank you for reading.
Thank you.